Yep, they've been hot. Even they're turned off, the other ones, the other parts don't pick up, so. All right. Good evening. I'm gonna call the October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty Committee of the Whole Board of Alderman Meeting to order. Ms. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Emerson.
Oh, here. Didn't sound like that.
Alderman Ward.
Excused.
Alderman Azier. Alderman Hunt?
Yes.
Alderman Mims?
Yes.
Alderman Bill Van Busker?
Here.
Alderman Walters?
Missing.
Alderman Mary Jane Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Green?
Excused.
Alderman Myers?
All right, we have a quorum. First thing on the agenda is approval of the October sixth, two thousand and twenty Committee of the Whole meeting minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read those? And if so, do I hear a motion?
No.
One second.
Mary Jane Van Busker, you have the motion. Ryan Myers, you have the second. Any conversation? Please call the roll.
Alderman Mary Jane Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Myers?
Yes.
Alderman Emerson?
Abstain as I was not here for that meeting.
Alderman Hunt?
Yes.
Alderman Bill Van Busker? Alderman Mims?
Yes.
Motion passes. Five to one abstention. All right, let's move on to the update of Raytown City Hall renovations, Council Chamber design options. Our Public Works Director, Jose Leon, what do you have for us, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Alderman Meeting. So, we took the feedback that we received last Tuesday at our meeting where we presented our thirty-five percent design to you all. We got a lot of good feedback. We appreciate that. And per your request, we are presenting to you tonight three options. Each of them have different dais layouts, and each layout has a permanent dais layout and a temporary dais layout, because as you know, we're still managing through COVID. So, right now, I'm gonna focus in on option A. On the screen here to my right. Option A has maintains the enlarged break room and AV room. And just as a reminder, the reason why we are still wanting this, an option that maintains an enlarged break room and an AV room is because we've identified already through our space assessment, the need to relocate our AV room into another part, into another part of City Hall, so that we can free up where the AV room is right now for a future meeting space. The enlarged break room helps it to be more practical, more useful for staff to enjoy and relaxing and eat luncheon. I think anybody here who's familiar with the way the break room is used right now would tell you that the break room isn't really used that much right now because of the limited space there is to sit and enjoy a break, have a break. The dais specifically is more of an angled dais, if you will, with the, has a straight run to it. All eleven chairs sit around the permanent dais, and in the dashed tables is where staff would potentially sit adjacent to the dais. As you can see, there's a ramp on one side and stairs on the other side of the dais to get up and down from it. And then with regard to capacity, which was another question that we received from you all, if you look to the right of this, our architects, and I apologize, I did not introduce them, Carrie is right here to my far left, and Dana is right here almost right behind me, they're with SFS Architects. There are two folks that are really leading this project on their end. So, they're gonna listen to any feedback and hear for any questions you might have on the technical design side. But continuing forward, what they've done for us is noted the capacity here for you all, just so that you can understand any changes that we would do per each layout, what the, what changes in terms of capacity. So, that's option A. Option B, again, maintains an enlarged break room, AV room moved over this side of City Hall. The dais is just one arc, if you will, with all eleven chairs sitting around it. Again, showing some dash lines where staff would potentially sit in that layout. The ramp and the stairs really don't move in this location and on this option, I apologize. And then to the right of that, you can see the socially distanced layout where it's separated for temporary use. And then again, looking at capacity or any questions around capacity, we've broken that down as well for option B. Continuing forward to our final option, option C. What we have here is a more of a rectangular dais layout. As you can see, the break room basically remains about the same size. No changes to the break room. The AV room would not be brought over. There's a couple different options to the dais that we're showing you here with the rectangular layout. And actually, there's two options with the rectangular layout, and then there's two options with, for those options in the temporary layout. And again, showing you where staff would potentially sit in the dashed tables there shown with chairs. And then any questions around capacity are right there under option C as well. To basically start this conversation, I wanted to review those with you all and at least give you all some understanding of where we stand as staff. You know, the work we've done to date, it really does show us that we should have an area, a room, rather, on this side of City Hall next to this room and our conference room for AV. We think it's more practical. We think it's more useful that way. We also firmly believe that the break room should be enlarged for staff. Having said those things, we believe option A is the, is the option that we would recommend. I know you haven't asked that question, so I just wanted to go ahead and state that. And we're here for any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so you answered one of them. I was gonna see what your recommendation was. Obviously, I'm not really a fan of option C, but A or B, I don't really have a problem with. B, I think the lines would be pretty clean. I kinda like the arc over the horseshoe, but that's kinda getting into semantics. Have you got any input from the judge? Did you send these over to the judge to see kinda what she wanted to do?
We have not. What we wanted to do, you know, we, we had gone through this effort with Judge Fan on the first side, and she expressed her wants and needs on that, and we believe that option A and B meet those, meet those needs.
Okay. Aside from that, I'm good with A or B. C, I agree with you guys, we need to expand a break room. You guys are here forty, forty hours a week, you need to be comfortable. And then the AV, the AV room as well. But that's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Ms. Emerson?
I've gone over this, and I do like the C. I like the way the C is, is shown with the horseshoe diagram there, and that's the one I would like to, to see.
Okay, Mr. Walters?
First, my apologies for being late this evening. I agree with Ms. Emerson. I like option C. I think it's the most attractive, most practical looking, and it looks like there's socially distanced there. Am I correct?
Well, there's a couple of options that have a socially distanced layout, yes.
Okay. The option C with the rounded corners as opposed to the square, it's just, it's more pleasing, more comfortable looking.
Mayor?
Mr. Hunt?
Looking at C, you do, you do not have the enlarged break room.
That's correct.
And, you know, I like the horseshoe, but look, looking at the whole package, A is And the enlargement is there. I would really rather go with A myself personally.
Mary Jane Van Busker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I personally like A or B, and the reason being, I think we need to enlarge that break room. These employees, they're not afforded a fancy office with nice leather chairs and, you know, a lot of amenities. They come in here and they work. I think they should have a nice break room to go to, to take their breaks and eat their lunch, and I'm for A and B. Thank you.
I came in just a little bit late, and so, let me remind you, if you put the AV room, does it shorten this room?
I wanna make sure I understand your question, Alderman Azier. This, this room, this council room or the break room?
I mean, that's the council room. When I look at the pictures, is the AV room on the other side of that wall?
No, the AV room is, is in this room right now. It would be in this room.
So, can you estimate like maybe point on the wall where that room will end, where the door is gonna be in this room? Like, is it, is it walking right here?
I would estimate it around where Alderman Hunt is.
Shortens the room.
So, this is the back wall?
Right.
And then, when you look at the city arrangement, whether it's A, B, C, or D, how far up is that gonna go? So, this is the wall right here. So, where are we gonna end up? We're gonna be up there with that podium then?
No, no. I would say that your, your seats, where the mayor would sit is approximately where you are. And as you can see in, as you can see in option A, there's five seat, two, two seats on both sides of him, and then it angles off there. So, I would say you all are up there toward, right, right in the area where you are, actually.
When I look at the border, there it looks like the area from where the mayor is to the very end, it looks like it's about the same distance to that table. I can get a feeling on, based upon the pictures it's showing us, are you gonna be, if you double that, where is that gonna end? This is where the mayor is, basically, right here. So, where are they gonna end up?
Yeah, so I would use the, what I would do if you're trying to get an estimate is use the door, this door here from the conference room right there. And, and that kinda gives you the extent, that door's not gonna move.
I think that's very good. So, basically, they're gonna end up on the other side of that podium? Use that door you're talking about?
That's staff. The, the dashed tables here?
Yeah.
Is staff. This is staff. This is all Alderman right here.
Right.
So, we've got, let me ask this, 'cause I think I know where he's going with this. So, where that wall right there that the counselor's pointing at, that would be, we already go out that far, so if he's sitting where my seat would normally be, he'd come around to that, and the other one would come around to, close to where the podium is. Or would it be that exaggerated?
I can't hear, I'm sorry.
Does that? Yeah. So, it will end about where it ends. It will be replaced, but it will end about that.
Okay, that's what I was getting at, yeah. So, in this side, it'd be the same way.
So, the spectators would begin about where? So, your spectators?
Your spectators would pretty much be where we're at now. So, which one are we looking at? The permanent or the social distancing? Let's look at the social distancing as you're, as you're measuring. So, if you look at, Jose, go back over, let's look at, actually, let's look at this permanent one. So, you go back to your wall, go back to the door, you just go down to the door that that's not gonna move, not the other one, the other one down there at the, the double doors. So, you pretty much do have the same amount of rows there. Are you asking how they got that? 'Cause those, it still puts us about the same way we had before.
Then where's gonna begin and end, or how everybody's gonna fit in, you know, in real life, I don't have a picture, but you got the room right here we're talking about.
Yeah.
So, I, I would have liked to have put a picture on exactly where the last person's gonna sit, where the first pair of public is gonna be. You've got ten rows there, I think, one, two, three, four, five, six.
So, you got three rows in the front? Yeah, you got three rows right there, so pretty much from where you are. We typically, if we typically line this room up, we don't go past that podium. We typically line it up just, just in front of that podium, and then we go all the way back. If this was not, this was set up last year at this time where we had no social distancing as part of it, we'd probably go just past that podium there and line it up. Depending on what we got it for, if it's court or just regular board meeting, and if we wanna add two extra rows, we can to get closer towards your area. So, capacity wise, it would not, it would not really impact your capacity as far as that change of A.
So, and then of course, the court too. So, my guess is that, I've been here on a pretty crowded court today, we've got a lot of people standing in the hallway. How are you gonna take care of those people?
Well, it's depending on the day. If you've been crowded here lately, yes, but in the past, we typically try to put as many people in here as possible, and then you stand on the walls. Typically, we only put less than a hundred and twenty, a hundred chairs out. We don't do, really do more, more than that. Maybe a hundred and fifty at times, but we don't really, I think we got a hundred and fifty chairs total if we have those right now.
We've had events for like senior citizens going to sit.
Uh huh.
And I think we even sometimes have holiday dinner.
Yeah, yes. And typically, like the holiday dinner?
You're taking, 'cause I see a twenty percent out of this room.
No.
Typically, where you have those events you're talking about, Mr. Azier, they don't come past the, the end, the end of the table where the counselor's sitting right now. I've never seen anything, even the deal that they have with the older folks, that never comes past there, usually.
Would, would we be able to host those events?
Well, you know, like I said, currently, if we have a holiday event, right now, they have to work out of that room to host the event. We cannot do anything out of the actual kitchen area. So, they have to bring coolers, have to put food, whatever it is, to try to make it out of that room and then walk in here. This here actually helped an event like that, because now you have a larger kitchen area or area that can be used as a kitchen area to help host events like that. As far as like, say, for instance, voting, that's another thing we do here. Voting, your capacity for voting would pretty much be similar to saying, what we have now. There will be some area that will be moved forward, but as far as setting up a booth, the width of your room and your depth is pretty much the same area. We try to use as much of this area as possible for those voting items.
Almost kind of like you're saying, with this plan, are we really gonna have more space than that?
No.
Because you said we have to use this room, and now you walk on.
Well, I think.
We wanna have to use that room for a kitchen area. When we have events where you have cooking, we have to use that room for the cooking part, to go get, to get the lighting set.
So, explain to me what the AV room is.
It's your audio visual.
AV equipment, is it available to go to watch?
So, audio visual equipment that we use in order to conduct a meeting. Right now, we do all that along with your, we also have a little copy room machine, but we set up equipment there where your microphones go and where they control the microphones along with some of the video equipment that we have in order for us to be able to show it live or show it as, as video recorded. So, that's what we say AV options. Typically, those rooms are closer towards the area where you're doing that work at. So, you have less of a run of electronic wires in order to go from there to there.
And I know we've been referring to it as an AV room only, Alderman Azier, but it's actually AV slash storage room is how we've been planning for it. As you can see behind us all, all the chairs and tables that have been stacked here for, well, since I've been here, we would anticipate using that room for not just AV, but when chairs and tables aren't being used or the room, we can place them in there to get them out of this room. So, it's also a storage room as well.
You got two in front of you, Mr. Walters. You have to wait a minute.
Yeah, I, I'm sure you could, I'm, from my standpoint, I'm still not wanting to increase the size of the door by ten percent. The, I don't see us adding on. Get all the extra space for staff. I, I guess it's hard for me to truly believe that you're gonna have court and never have anybody standing at the court. I mean, I guess, I mean, maybe you're right, we don't really get that many tickets anymore. We could give a lot more. They, one time, our revenue for like a million dollars, and now probably less than a hundred thousand dollars. Or maybe you're right.
Well, and those are the conversations we had with Judge Fan. When, when we were going through this before the thirty-five percent, we, we had those conversations with her about the size of the room potentially decreasing, not significantly, but a, a little amount, and she said exactly what you're saying. You know, it may, it may not feel that different because we're not writing that many tickets.
Can you interrupt just for a minute? Mr. Azier, you have not turned on your microphone.
Yeah, I don't have to turn on.
Hit the little button down there until it turns green.
Push, push long enough for it to turn green, Jim.
Okay, I got it. I didn't think it sounded like you were on, so.
My first time to use it, so. Anyway, okay, I, I still have a lot of reservations. I know you're gonna make a decision tonight.
No, we don't.
Thank you.
Don't speak up like that. He's got the floor.
We had a motion at the last meeting voted by unanimously by this board.
Mr. Walters, Mr. Azier speaking. Please be quiet.
I don't like what's happening here.
Are you done, Mr. Azier?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Van Busker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your opportunity to speak tonight. Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go. Much better.
Sorry, I had to do that. I really wouldn't have a problem with either A or B, but I believe, I believe we do need to enlarge the break area for employees. I think that's, that's really important to do that. How many employees we have in, in the building here at one time?
Damon, you know the answer to that?
Typically, in, in the building at one time? Typically, less. As far as just upstairs, we're probably less than thirty.
Upstairs?
Yeah.
I, I think, I think it's important that we, that we do enlarge that. I, I wish we could keep this the same, but I think it's just, that's common sense thinking, I think, to enlarge that. And while we're at it, if we're gonna move that wall, we might as well take advantage of adding the audio visual room as well. It's not gonna reduce the size of the room really any, anymore if we're gonna enlarge the, the break area. I, and, and Mr., Mr. Azier, you mentioned the old, or where the audio visual room is now, and you're aware where that's at, right? Same, same room where they have my, no, well, same room where they have my office over, no, I'm just messing with you. Anyway, what, what will you utilize that area for? Where the old, where the old one is? If we, if we approve this and the old, then the new room is here, what are you planning on using your old audio visual room for?
Right, so what we, what we would like to use it for in the future, if, you know, we're allowed to do future, a phase two of City Hall at some point, is a meeting space, another meeting room. As you all know, we have this room for our large public meetings, and we have our conference room. But if you come in here any day, any day, you will see that we have a number of particularly community development, public work staff trying to meet with several people at a counter. And it is challenging, especially whenever there's only two counters available to really pull out drawings and look at. And so, ideally, it would be a four to six person meeting space where we could take a contractor in that room or somebody who wants to talk about a permit and look at something and say, okay, let's sit down and let's look at this together, so that we can keep the flow of people coming and going if they're just here to pick up a coupon or here to get a dog license or what have you, right? They're not waiting in line. So, that's a long answer, Alderman Van Busker, but ideally, it's, it's a meeting space.
Okay. I, and I was kidding about the, my office, of course, being there, but I, I really would like to see an area where the Alderman could have a, an office area where they could utilize it, maybe with a computer, telephone, and I could sit down with constituents and, and meet there. That would really be nice if we could, we could have that. And maybe that'd be a consideration to also utilize it for an area such as that. But if you watch the series Parks and Recreation, well, they have, the, the councilman there have really nice offices, but I don't know if a lot of you are familiar with that series. But anyway, well, the tables for staff, those are, are they still just gonna be tables? Or temporary, they can be moved, or what, what are they gonna be?
Moveable, movable tables.
They're movable.
And I believe, our architect should correct me if I'm wrong, but they're gonna be designed to.
You know, they won't look like this, right? They're gonna be designed to really look a part of the dais.
That's what I was, that's, that's what I was wondering. So, it will, that's great. That's great. I think that's, that's important. You can kinda get a, a pretty good idea if you just, if you just lay A and B together here and just flip, and just flip the, the edge of the page from, from A to B, you can see the, see the difference there in the two, two layouts. B gives you a little more seating capacity and, than A, but I think it's, I, I would be okay with either one of those. And if staff feels more comfortable with, with A, I, I would, that'd be fine with, that'd be fine with me. be fine with me. And as far as events, that doesn't mean if you have an event in here, such as Council on the Aging has an event.
Military.
Well, you can use, yeah, you can utilize, utilize all of this area between the sides of the dais here. That's not, you don't lose that. That won't be blocked off. That's, that's going to give you capacity all the way up to where, wherever the dais starts at that point, when you add the additional space for the, for the break room and the audio visual room, then you're going to, you're still going to have a usage of that, of that area between the, between the dais for those events. I think the temporary or the, what do you want to call it? The social distancing, as they call it, for A is 27 people, for B it's 23. It actually gets reduced a little bit, even though the seating capacity is more for B for the rest of the, rest of the room on B than it is for A. So I'd be fine with, and it's only reduced by four, four people. The seating capacity is only, only changes by, what's, six, six from one to the other. So there's, there's not a lot of, not a lot of difference there. And so I think I kind of, I kind of like, like A myself, but that whatever, whatever the board should decide and the majority of the board, I'd be fine with. And since staff has suggested that, I'd be okay with that. I think that's, certainly as far as C, I don't, I don't think, I don't believe we need to even consider option C because of the fact that we do need to enlarge that break area. And, you know, as far as the, the other room, we're going to enlarge it, we might as well take advantage of that space as well. Thank you.
Mr. Meyer.
So, you know, looking through these, option C, in my opinion, is totally off the table. I know the, the whole reason that we sent the architects back to the drawing board was we didn't want the two, two tiers of elected officials having to, not having the ability to look at each other. So that, that's something to take into consideration. Another thing, I know Alderman Azure, you have a, you have a concern with the, you know, we're losing 10% of space, but at the same time, I believe that we're increasing the efficiency of the space. So that's one thing to take into consideration, too. Like Damon said, that we're able to, you know, you can get in and out easier back here, and it increases the, the kitchen space, should we need it, gives the employees more space. We may lose a little bit, but aside from having a Boy Scout troop here on a Tuesday night or, you know, the, the random TIF meeting or cutting a third of the police budget, I mean, we're usually pretty good in terms of having spectators. I believe we have two this evening that aren't with the architect firm. In terms of court, I mean, if it comes down to it, I mean, Damon, don't we have the option? If we need to, we can just add another court date?
I don't know about that one. That would be directed by the, the judges for as there, but I'm sure there's always opportunities there.
That is an option, if we need to expand to another court, court date and kind of thin it out in here, that's an option, too, but.
The other thing, too, if I may interrupt you, like, like a lot of people don't know right now, the way they run court, they don't run a whole bunch of people in here. They actually bring them in in small amounts. While we're going through this, they do not fill this courtroom.
And then, Hosea, are we going to move the, is there enough room in the proposed AV room to move the server stacks out of Dan's office so he can get a little more space?
Not in this, this phase, no. Again, we, we were going to go over our space assessment with you all as a future date, once we get through this project, to kind of talk to you about where those are going. I do believe Dan mentioned at least maybe one server going in this AV room. I can't remember which one, but I do believe he's, he asked for that.
Okay, and then Alderman Van Busker brought up a very good point that, you know, as an alderman, we don't really have any place to meet with constituents, aside from the conference room. I know that I've talked to a couple of the, of the other aldermen, and that, that is something we kind of would like to see, just because I don't want to have to meet someone at my house or, you know, I'll meet him at McDonald's for coffee or whatever, but that would be a perk to all this, but I'm, I'm in favor of A or B.
Very good. Mr. Walters.
Yes, I have some questions. I'd like to find out who gave direction to completely ignore the motion that was made at the last meeting, which specifically said not to make any changes in the size of this room? Maybe I wasn't clear. Could you all understand what I said?
I believe the motion was to bring back other ideas, and they prefer not to change this dais to a double stack.
They, they did not want the double stack? That's, that's, and C is, no, no, sir, C is single stack. I'm looking at it right here in front of me.
I don't think anybody ignored anything. I believe they brought forward ideas like we asked them to.
The motion was not to change, and that's very specific. I went back and checked against the recording of the meeting, and it was very specific to say, I remember the people up there were now saying contrary thoughts, and I just wondered whose idea was-
It said not significantly decreased.
You asked for a 10% contingency because the amount of money had been cut back to just that money which was the COVID funds. You did, there was a motion and an amendment to the- It's in the tape, I'm not making this up.
Well, I, I mean, if I did, that was not me, but it did, it did add for a 10% contingency, but our capacity, maximum, maximum load is 226.
Say again?
The maximum, the maximum acumen load is 226, which is what you look at, at capacity as far as amount of people who could be in there.
We talked specifically about not changing the layout of this room as, as regards its size. And somewhere along the line, we decided to ignore that motion and to just go ahead, and we're just going to pretend like we didn't do it. We're going to come back and repeat on this until we get some way to pass it.
And what steps we can do to not significantly impact the, the load of the room, occupancy in the room?
We also, we also talked about not changing the size of the room as well. And that is very clearly in the video of the meeting. I, I urge you to watch it so that you can be understanding where you're mistaken on that. My point on this is, if, if this is an end run to try to change what we had already voted on doing, as far as this room goes, I feel it is out of order. I think that we should come back to the full city council during regular session and then vote on it because we are missing three members tonight. And three of those members, in fact, if I remember right, the vote was, was unanimous for those directions coming to you. And I just, I, I, it, it really makes me angry to see what's being done here. This kind of makes a farce of our last meeting and all the discussion that we had. Certainly does of the, of the, of the, of what we came up with as a solution at the end. As far as the break rooms go, I noticed you've got a large room out here on the other side in the rotunda coming into the council. You could enlarge out that direction as well. On the other side of the break room here, you have a large air, open area coming up to the service windows. You could enlarge there if you wanted to make a larger break, break room. You could put your AV stuff there. I don't know why we're trying to nip and tuck away at the size of this meeting. We have a court right now that is so busy, two, two sessions on a Wednesday, that we closed down the rest of the City Hall to public, to public use.
That's, let's not mix those two things together.
Well, why not? Because we're talking about how there's hardly anybody here, but yet we're closing City Hall down because it's so crowded due to court. That's what I have been told.
And that is court mandate of the capacity you can have within court during the judge's chambers. So in order for us not to go beyond the mandated amount that you can have is why we do that. So that's, like, this room is set up right now as due to COVID as far as your, your social distancing, so it's not a situation of not having the capacity within the room. So even before that, that was not the case. So I, I just want to make sure we don't mix those two things up together.
It does, it, it is somewhat the case because we do have a number of people who come in here regardless. I've been in this courtroom on many occasions, not for myself, but as witnesses for people and people, some of my constituents, and this room is packed. And that is, that is even after we did cut back on the number of tickets that we write here, where we don't have very many traffic tickets being written now, and I think everybody knows that. That's, there's a number of reasons for that, I won't go into at this point, but, but my point is, this room was supposed to be kept the same size, and we ought to bring it back to the whole city council.
Earlier, you asked, why could we not do that as far as changing the size and putting the, putting the, putting the AV room, making it larger or making the break room larger in the hallway? Well, it's because these are all connected. A majority of AV options that come here regarding what you needed to update your dais, to update your, your, as far as your break area, those things are already in place. So if you move these walls a couple of feet, change the trajectory of your actual dais, that helps, it makes it more efficient, it makes it larger. So if you kick a wall out that direction, in that case, you change everything that's in that area. It wouldn't just be a one-wall removal. You understand what I'm saying?
Only if you went, only if you went from east to west, it would be one-wall removal.
So you're saying taking the conference room and making it bigger?
If that would accommodate your AV room and your break room, they don't use the AV equipment during breaks, do they?
You make that as a- It's just straight, and then you have a bubble, almost like a pea shape.
I have a water, I'm going to walk around and show you exactly what I have in mind. My, my point is that the only solution is not carving up this room and making it into lesser, into a lesser room. This room is used for events beyond just city council meetings and beyond just court, and has been used more frequently in the past than now simply because of the virus that's out there. Well, I, I think we're, we're being short-sighted in doing that, and I think that we should look at other options. You've got a lot of wasted space right to the other side of this wall, and I would, I would use that first and keep this the way it is and try to find another way and perhaps move your AV room over to where the break room is. I don't know how much room you need for that equipment.
Anything else, Mr. Walters, you're starting to get into-
Details.
Details that really aren't for you to do.
Well, actually, it's all the same, same subject.
All right, okay, do you have anything else?
I don't, I urge you not, don't vote on this tonight because there's no, this is a, a work session, it's not, not a council meeting.
Ms. Bims?
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
I can hear you, ma'am.
Okay, this is something that we had asked them to bring us back, some layouts, and that was the, the things that I'm hearing Mr. Walter talk, Mr. Walters talking about was suggestions, it wasn't all motions, and then there were amendments that came in there. But I want to ask this question tonight because I was listening to what everybody had to offer here. Tonight, if I thought we were supposed to have them bring something to us, because if we don't make a decision tonight, is my understanding, then we might as well just send this funding on back because this is, we are cutting into the time that they have to get this work done, which has to be done by the end of December. I thought they were supposed to bring us some plans tonight, we make a decision, we vote on it, and let them go do their job. Now, from what I've understood tonight and just listening to what's going on, I just want, can I ask Mary Jane Van Busker the question?
Go right ahead.
Mary Jane, and looking at, at Plan A, is it doing the seating that you were talking about in the last meeting?
Your Plan A or Plan B?
Turn it on the microphone.
Plan A or Plan B, yes.
And so that was what you were talking about for the last?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
This is something that needs to be done, and we need to move forward with this and allow these folks to do their job instead of us trying to tell them that, but since they brought what we had asked for, what, what everybody asked for, and we're sitting and looking at the majority of the folks, can I make a motion for us to move forward with this and get to the staff to do the, what is it, A or B, whichever one it is that suits, that needs for that boardroom?
You got to make a motion on which one it is. Need to make a motion on A or B, because that sounds like the two that people like the best from what I'm hearing.
Yes. A.
Option A?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Meyer.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Yes.
Let's ask the city attorney, can we pass this type of motion in a committee of the whole? Does it hold any water? We haven't called a meeting to order.
The majority of the board is here.
The majority of the board is here.
That's right.
This is advertised as a committee of the whole meeting, not a board of all the meeting.
But it's still a majority of the members are here, it's a meeting discussing public business.
So there's no, there's no regulations in your codes that are in order where the committee of a whole can't make a motion or can't vote?
Does it hold any water in law?
It would be a majority of the board, yes.
It would be a majority of the people in this room, I understand.
It would be a majority of the people in this room right now.
Correct, correct.
We have motions and vote on stuff on work sessions, and this is what was a work session, it's now a committee of the whole. We do vote on that stuff all the time. You had stuff in your blog the other day, from what I read, that somebody sent me a screenshot that wasn't accurate with the votes you made last time.
No, it's completely accurate. I'll sit down and view it with you if you'd like, and I'll show you exactly who made the motions, when they were made.
You made your point of order, you're done. You're done.
Oh, you're right.
Good night, Mary Jane Van Busker.
Well, I don't serve on Council of the Aging anymore. I relinquished that when I became an alderman. But Frank, you're a liaison to that committee, are you not?
Yes.
Okay, I know that in the past, when I was on there, we had discussed having our senior expo to find a different place to have it because this was crowded. And Alice wanted to have it here because she thought everybody should know where City Hall is. Well, I think everybody, senior citizens know where City Hall is. So I think, you know, they're probably going to check other places out maybe to have it. I don't know, I don't know if that's been discussed, because we didn't have one this year because of COVID, so I don't know the situation on that. But I will say that the only time this place is crowded, crowded, crowded is, is if your Boy Scout is up here receiving some kind of an award or some school child is up here getting some kind of an award or, or some kind of Hot Topic, okay? As far as court, I'd like to see it limit down, because I've been in, I've, Bill and I came up here one night and sat in court and just watched. Well, the whole family shows up, you know? I mean, and we, we got kids crying, we got bottles being thrown, we got, we got everything. I think we need to limit, if you come to court, it's the, the person that's got the ticket, his lawyer, and maybe one family member. We don't need to have a family reunion up here. And that's just-
That would have to do, that, that would be the judge that would have to do that.
The judge would have to do that?
Yep, yep. She's a member of the circuit court, and she's the one that would have to do that.
Okay, well, I, that's just a thought, so. Anyway, yeah, I'm good with, I think Ms. Bims said B, I'm good with that, so I'm good.
She said A.
Oh, she said A, okay. I'm good with A, A or B.
According to what you're saying, that we can do Plan A, which would include construction, all the new chairs, the new AV equipment if we need it, I'm assuming we would because we have more space, kitchen appliances and cabinets and equipment for the kitchen, all the furniture for the personnel break room, other accessories, and by adding the rooms, you'll be altering the heating and air conditioning for those rooms. That's a lot of vents or changes that have to be made because each of those rooms will have to be heated or have air conditioning accordingly. So all that can be done in the budget provided by the federal government.
Within the $600,000 is what you're asking?
I'm, I'm asking that if we vote for Plan A, will everything that we need to facilitate what we're doing be included in what we're beginning, or you're going to have to come back and ask for more money, and how much is it going to be? back and ask for more money, and how much is it going to be?
As far as ask for more money, we would have to come, explain to you.
Any of your equipment, cabinets?
If you're going to put a kitchen range, you know, whatever goes, if it's really a kitchen, it's not just four walls. Everything we're going to need for everything you're planning, that is included in the money coming from the federal government.
So part of the money will be coming?
I just want a yes or no. I mean, just, is it or isn't?
Yeah, I'm just trying to answer the question automatically.
Okay.
So we gave you a budget that was 1.7 million, that was carved up, include about $600,000 and set aside for work to be done as a capital side. If that is done within that $600,000, I cannot say we'll have all that done within the $600,000. We would be able to utilize additional funds to help with the remaining amount. But we believe the $600,000 will take up a majority of that money, of what it would cost.
My concern is, I would like to have a feeling, and you said, in my estimation, but if we vote for this and we get halfway through it, are we going to have the money in the budget for everything you're planning? I think that if you're going to be planning a project like this, you have to have the whole picture, not just part of it.
Well, I want to make sure we understand something here, too. When we vote, what you're voting for is what options to move forward in design?
We're not voting for the contract, we're not voting for it to be finalized. Those things still have to come before you beforehand. So we're voting for to finish up with the design, to figure out what we want to do design-wise so we can move forward. And then, once we get a contractor on board, will come before you with a price of what we'll take in order to do this. Based off our current estimates, the $600,000 will take a large part of it, and then after that, we'll probably have to have additional funds to take care of it completely. But this is just strictly just the design. We asked for the committee based off, like Alderman Mims said, and actually was mentioned too by Alderman Van Busker, do you think you'll need a special meeting in between to try to get these things answered so you continue designing, to try to stay on a tight frame? And that's what we're doing here. You're not voting to provide a contract. Last week, we voted, and maybe that would help clear it up. Teresa, can you explain, what was the motion, you or Jennifer, what was the motion last week that was voted on and agreed upon? Because it was guarding strictly the design of the project.
Right.
Not the total contract. Go ahead.
Well, I.
Just give me just one moment, and I'll have it up for you.
Okay.
What I'm just getting at is that last week, we voted to have the design contract continue on. So FSFS had $109,000, which was $80,000 of that was to continue on with the design, along with the 10% to continue with the design.
They did that, but we wanted it before to go too far down the line to make sure that the options that were asked for included removing the two-tiered dais was agreed upon by a board before we moved down the street, you know, kept going with the work. And that's what we're doing right now. So this is not a final that it will, that we have, you know, that the contract's in place, that they're going to start construction in the next two weeks. This is strictly just us working on a design to go forward with the project.
If I were having a house designed for me, and I decided to add rooms, I would assume, for example, that anytime I make a change, that it could cost more in air conditioning, or because I'm making it bigger, I'm going to need more furniture. I would think that there'd be a high correlation between the design of anything you're constructing and what it's going to cost to equip it and utilize it if we're going to make it more efficient. So maybe I'm wrong here. I'm, so you're kind of leading me to believe that the design has nothing to do with the full cost of the end project.
I would never say that. Design has nothing to do with the full cost of.
You still were just warning on the design has nothing.
Hang on a minute, Ms. Bims.
With the question I asked.
Repeatable intent.
You said that, my question was, what is the final cost of the end project that you're designing? That was the question.
Yeah, what I'm telling you is that I can just give you an estimate, an estimate it costs it. Jose gave me last year, was last week, or two weeks ago, was based off the original design you had, that was before you, but the two-tiered dais was about $800,000 to a million.
And that in your budget of your federal funds, you have $600,000. And so what we're asking is that you utilize those federal funds of leverage to allow you to move forward with the project. With those federal funds comes requirements, CARES requirements. Part of those CARES requirements is you got to provide something to show that you either remote, social distancing, providing updated measures that will allow you to fit within COVID. Those are the things. When you first started asking me the question, you asked me, does the $600,000 pay for everything? Or does the federal funds pay for everything? And I would just explain to you, that's not the case, that this is where we will be at.
Okay, one last comment. The picture that I'm looking at on the wall seems to be like a significant change in City Hall. And I think that if we're going to be voting on Plan A, because I'm seeing a kitchen and other stuff, that that's what we're voting on. At least, I think that's what we're voting on, if I voted yes or no. And I think a smart board would want to use foresight and long-range planning on what the end project is going to end up costing. That's all I'm asking. And I don't think we have that. So you can still vote on it, you can say, well, we really don't care. But I think it's a fair question, I think it's a good question, because I think it's smart to get a feeling if this is going to end up costing us a lot more money than we can afford to pay.
Eight hundred to a million. That's. What I just said, Alderman Azier, $800,000 to a million is what we're estimating.
One thing to keep in mind, I mentioned this at the last meeting, was the way we're going to work with a contractor on this is through a construction manager at risk agreement. At a November 10th meeting, we intend to bring forth a contractor recommendation. We've sent out RFQ, we've received proposals, we've done our due diligence, and we have a recommendation, we're formulating that recommendation as we speak, Alderman Azier. With that process, the contractor comes on board early through the design, works with the architects directly, and starts estimating the project as we go along so that their numbers are firm and tight when we bring that final construction to approve at the board level. This is how much the project is, that we feel very confident in those numbers. Right now, I think it was Alderman Ward who asked me last week, how much is this project? And I said, well, right now, we're estimating between $800,000 and a million dollars, total project. And so that's an estimate, right? Right now, that's what you want, that's the estimate.
Thank you.
Can I interrupt you just for a minute, Mr. Azier, unless you're done? Teresa Henry is ready to give us that information. Go ahead, Teresa.
Yes, the motion made by Ricardo Mize, that's the architecture design that him and Fernando did at the last meeting, the motion made by Alderman Ward, second by Alderman Walters, was the architect is prohibited from considering a design with a permanent split dais or that would substantially reduce the square footage available to the public, Board of Alderman, or Municipal Court. Plus, a 10% contingency is to be added due to changes to the contract.
Okay. So it didn't have anything in there that really significantly changes what these have? So, in my opinion, but, Mr. Myers?
Uh, I was before you.
No, I didn't, but he was before you, you're next.
Yeah, I don't have anything to say.
You're done? Okay. Mr. Van Busker? Didn't forget you, just a lot of people talking ahead of you.
I just wanted to make sure, I won't use my mask again to talk. So actually, the motion was that we not substantially reduce the capacity, that's what the motion was. So that's kind of relevant, you know, I mean, substantially. And I don't think we're substantially reducing it. We are reducing it. But, so that's what the motion was. Also, it was suggested that we actually have a special meeting, if necessary, to review the alternative plans, and that's what we're doing this evening, so that's why this is happening, because of the time constraints related to this, to these funds. So that was suggested.
Van Busker, very well put.
That was suggested, that was also just suggested at the last meeting. And actually, to be, to utilize these funds for this, you have to make some type of COVID-compliant thing on a permanent basis. If you went to, or wouldn't necessarily be on a permanent basis, but you can utilize it for that. If you did that on a permanent basis, you could go to option C over here, and you could spread everyone out on the dais, and it would still reduce the seating capacity, even if you didn't add the break room, additional space for the break room and the audiovisual room, you just left it as is here. And you changed the dais to spread everyone out permanently without having a second tier. It would still reduce the seating capacity. So I think it's just, it's kind of relates to what you consider significantly changing the capacity. And, yeah, we're going to reduce it. I think everyone understood that, it probably would be reduced to some extent. If we're not going to do that, then I guess we just leave everything as is and not do anything. But if we're going to actually utilize those funds to enhance City Hall, to make a larger break room, to try to utilize this space to the fullest of its, you know, to its fullest, then I think, I think one of either A or B here is a good plan to do that. So the, you said 800 to a million, 800,000 to a million, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
Was your estimate? Now, does that include the architectural portion of this?
Yes.
Okay, so that's included in that. Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Busker. Good points brought up, thank you. Mary Jane Van Busker.
Thank you.
And then you, Ms. Bims.
I just want to say that evidently Jim Azier has never remodeled a home with my husband. Because you don't need to buy everything new in a kitchen, you can use the same sink, there's no stove back there. You can use the same refrigerator, clean it up if you want to spray it a different color, you can get companies to come in and spray appliances. You may need a new, an updated microwave. I'm sure Pam, I'm speaking for Pam Clark now, I'm sure she gets some good deals, you can get end-of-year models. But you don't need to throw everything out. So, that's all I got. There's no stove back there now, there's just a microwave, I believe, so you wouldn't have to buy a stove. I mean, they're not going to be cooking a coarse meal back there. So, anyway, that's just a thought. And as far as those cabinets, if they take them out and they're careful with them, you could probably use those as storage someplace else in City Hall, or maybe even sell them. So that's all I got.
Ms. Bims?
Is any of that available on that Roebuck book you were talking about last week?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Ms. Bims, you got the floor.
Tell Alderman Ryan to leave that serious Roebuck book alone. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Go right ahead.
I'm starting to get a little meat on ya, but thank you, Alderman Bill Van Busker, because you pretty much said anything I'm saying for. But the latest I want to say was, we were given $600,000 more than what we had, that we didn't have to reach over to our budget to get to make the COVID nineteen compliances that need to be done. I don't want to thank you, but I just want to make sure they understood. So the other, whatever we had to do to come out of our budget, we're not trying to do it all of what we have. My thing is doing what the majority of the board has chose to do so that we can move forward. Because at the rate we're going, if we don't get started, we might as well give them back the money because we're not going to be in compliance. So that's why tonight's meeting was called, for us to be able to move forward in the designs. So, and my reasoning for asking, because I needed to ask Mary Jane, because she done done a lot of this stuff, and I got, let her know that I heard what she was saying, and with the layout that A had, to meet what most of everybody had been saying, and I'm sitting here taking notes. So I just want to say to all of you, I appreciate listening to you, give your input so that we can move forward. Instead of us sitting and not being able to do anything, we have got to take Raytown and move forward, and not keep going 20 years backwards. And we've been struggling with all the things that cleaning up behind everyone else. I know my first three years of running, trying to clean up, and let us be able to move forward because people been sitting there watching us, and I just told you, wanted to share that with you all, because they don't think we're going to meet the requirements to use the funding that was given to us, and they've been trying to wait to grab our money. And Mary Jane, you know how I am with that, it's like buying a pair of shoes, I ain't getting nothing back. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Does anybody else have anything? You want one's going twice. Call the roll, please. On option A, first by Ms. Bims, and second by Mr. Meyer.
Alderman Mims?
Yes.
Alderman Myers?
Yes.
Alderman Hunt?
Yes.
Alderman Emerson?
Pass.
Alderman Bill Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Walters?
He left.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Mary Jane Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Emerson?
Yes.
Who carries? In Ashley, seven votes for. Okay. Unless anybody has anything else to take a motion for adjournment. Mr. Meyer, second by Ms. Mary Jane Van Busker.
There's only six of us.
There's seven.
Ah, excuse me.
Thank you.
Six and a half.
Yeah. All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? We are adjourned at 7:30, 7:41.